Good evening. Good evening. Can't see the light.
You're on.
Good evening. The time is now 6:30 PM on Monday, September 9, 2024, and I call this open meeting on the Lexington Select Board to Order. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format via Zoom. Members of the public can view and participate in the meeting from their devices by clicking on the link posted with the agenda. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. We are also being broadcast live and for future on-demand viewing by Lex Media. All materials provided to members of the public, members of the board are also available to members of the public. The board members are in person this evening. I'm Doug Lucenti, the chair. On my right is Joe Pato. On my, on his right is Vice Chair Jill Hay. On my left is Susie Barry. On her left is Mark Sandin. Joining us from staff this evening is Town Manager Jim Malloy, Deputy Town Manager Kelly Axtell, and joining us remotely is the Select Board Executive Clerk Kim Katzenbach. I move that we go into executive session for two items. First is under exemption six, to consider the purchased lease value of real property for the East Lexington Fire Station options. Second is under exemption two, preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel for the interim town manager. Further, as chair, I declare that an open meeting on these items may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. Further, the Select Board will reconvene an open session at the end of the executive session. By a roll call vote to enter executive session, Ms. Hay.
Yes.
Mr. Pato?
Yes.
My vote is yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Sandin?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are now in executive session.
Well, Mr. Lucenti, would you unmute? Thank you.
Welcome back, everyone. Earlier this evening, the board went into an executive session. The executive session is now complete, and we are back in our regular session. So we are at the point in our agenda that is the public comment section. And we will open the floor to general public comment tonight. As we begin, I'd like to remind everyone that we are all neighbors and working together in our community's best interest. I ask that all comments be made with civility and respect and without casting aspersions or references to motives. Open public comments are for items not otherwise covered on our agenda. Public comments are allowed for up to 10 minutes, and each speaker is limited to two minutes. Members of the board will neither comment nor respond other than to ask clarifying questions. Remote attendees who have dialed in by phone should press star nine to be recognized or click on the raise hand button in Zoom. If you're joining us in person, please approach the microphone. When you are recognized to speak, please state your name, address, any relevant board or committee affiliation. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment on an item not covered elsewhere on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing no hands online or no one standing in the room, we are going to move on to our Select Board Concerns and Liaison Reports. Colleagues, we did have written comments tonight from Mr. Pato. Thank you, Mr. Pato. And are there any additional comments from the members of the board verbal? Mr. Sandin?
I did submit some written comments. I'm sorry, I did submit some written comments. I'm not sure they made it into the packet.
During the updated. Oh, my apologies. I must have not seen them in an updated version, so. Okay, so I'll look at. I saw Mr. Pato was looking for some feedback, and we will address that, Mr. Pato, maybe on the 16th?
Yes, I just wanted to alert the board to specific actions that were being requested in advance.
So, members, please, make sure you read the requests so we're all prepared for when we have that discussion. Any further verbal comments? Okay, so I'm going to move on. Mr. Malloy, is there a town manager's report this evening?
Not this evening.
Great, thank you. We do have a consent agenda this evening, and the consent agenda has nine items on it. The first is to approve Select Board meeting minutes from August 5, 2024, August 15, 2024, which is a summit meeting, August 19, 2024, which is another regular Select Board meeting. Second is to approve a one-day liquor license for Revital Cafe and Kitchen at 1729 Mass Ave for a first Friday pop-up event on October 4, 2024, from 6 to 8 PM. Third is to approve an entertainment license for Fallen Church at 755 Massachusetts Avenue. They're having a, the East Village Community Fair, which is always a lot of fun. And that's Saturday, October 5, 2024, from 10 AM to 3 PM. Fourth is to approve and sign a proclamation for the DAR Constitution Week, which is the week of September 20, excuse me, September 17 to the 23rd, 2024. Fifth is to approve a one-day liquor license for Communities United for 13 Depot Square for their ninth annual Pages of Possibilities Gala on September 19, 2024, from 6 PM to 9 PM. Our sixth item on consent is to approve a one-day liquor license for the Historical Society at One Bedford Street for the Only Murders in the Tavern event, which is very unique. That's Wednesday, October 4, 2024, from 7 PM to 9 PM. Our seventh item is to approve a one-day liquor license for Wilson's Farm, Wilson Farm at 10 Pleasant Street. They're having a Beer Garden event, September 26, 2024, from 5 PM to 8 PM. Number eight is to accept a Select Board Committee resignation for the Housing Partnership Board for Samita Medellia. And our ninth item is to approve responses to liquor license compliance check violations. Do any members of the board wish to have any items removed from consent and considered individually, Ms. Hay?
Not a, not a removal, but I apologize. I caught one typo earlier today and not the other. October 4 is a Friday. We corrected it in one listing and not in the other. So just the number six says Wednesday, October 4. It's Friday, October 4.
Thank you, Ms. Hay.
And the request was correct. It's just we goofed in our.
Good catch. I will, we'll make sure that gets corrected for the actual license of that. Are there any other questions or comments from members of the board? Okay, seeing none, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it is unanimous, five to zero. All of the motions pass. Okay, our first item on the agenda for individual consideration this evening is for the board to discuss the Lexington 250th Monument at Belfry Hill, for being joined by Barry Kuna from the Lex 250 Commission and Miriam Gosevich, who is the artist who designed the project we're about to review. So if you both want to come up here, that would be great. And if you have a third, we can certainly pull up an additional chair. And I believe Ms. Katzenbach will put the slides up on the screen, and you're welcome to take it away, Barry.
Yeah, that was actually my first comment was.
And make sure, if you could push the button to, and the green light will appear, and you can speak right into the mic.
There we go, sorry.
Thank you. I know you've had a chance to look at the slides. I don't know if you want us to actually go through them all again, or if you have just specific questions to go ahead and ask about those specific questions. We can go through them quickly if you want. Given that we haven't, as a board, had the presentations, I think it would be actually important. You don't have to go into excruciating detail, but I think just to give the public who's watching at home as well a good. Sure, it would be helpful.
Let me give a little bit of history then, because I think for the rest of the people that are listening and so forth. This was a project that was initiated by a Lexington resident, former Lexington resident Howard Woke. He generously offered $250,000 to build a monument, to have a monument commemorating the 250th anniversary of the Battle of Lexington. Contacted a friend of his on the commission, BB Falick. BB brought it in front of the Lexington Commission. We agreed that this was a worthy endeavor to try and go ahead and get planned. Initially, so what happened is we contacted the Metropolitan Area Planning Council to organize the call to artists, develop subcommittees for review, criteria that we wanted in the, in your monument, and then finally a selection committee. From that, four finalists were chosen. We had a public viewing of all those four submittals, and we took all those comments into, into account when we finally settled on the one that you're going to see here tonight from Miriam Gosevich. We've made some changes, and there's even some changes in this, and I'm going to let, actually, I'm going to turn this over to Larry, who's a project manager, to go through the rest of them. But I wanted to give you a good idea about the history of it, and we've made some changes based on what we've heard from the first time we met with you and from the HDC and from the Monuments Committee, and I think the changes, I think are, were all, they were all good suggestions, and we've made those changes. And Larry, I'm going to let you take it over, and let you sit here, and I'm going to go sit down.
Oh, I can just pull this over.
Yeah, Barry, you want to stay just in case there's questions about the process or anything?
And is this on?
Larry, Larry, if you could just state for the record your, your full name and role in this.
Larry Warrens, and not the address, just the name, right? Yeah, so I am functioning as the local sort of person. Miriam and I actually went to school together and have stayed friends. And I have been an owner's project manager for about the last 25 years here in the Boston area. There are, to our minds, actually, a lot of slides that were very relevant to the monument memorial and not very relevant to you, so we are really going to fly. And I guess I should just say next, 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 in order to get them along. You might want to stop here for a moment, which is, this is some examples of monuments memorial projects that Miriam has done in the past. You can see they're extensive and, and I, you know, we'll let Miriam talk about her own design, but again, we'll go pretty fast so that we can leave it open for some questions.
Thank you. Nice to finally meet you in person.
Thank you. I'm very honored to be here and to meet you in person. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So basically, the, the challenge, the challenge of this memorial is what is the story and how do you tell the story? And, and it's clear that the story is a story of the courage that people had when they confronted such a small group of local citizens confronted such a large army. And so it is to convey their vulnerability that the whole, the whole memorial is dedicated. And so, so it's basically allegorical, it's not a literal representation, but it's really so that when you're there, you will actually experience what they could have experienced at the time. The project is called The Path to Liberty, and it's the path in, in that sense, but it's also the path that it connects, is the gateway to the Belfry. And so it makes the spatial connection between the, the Battle Green and the Belfry. And basically, the, the, you know, it's a, it's a very straightforward project. We had, we meant it to be interactive and engaging so that people could sort of learn, and then we'll have the next slide. And that is also meant to be inspirational and timeless, so that, you know, when people go to the site, they could actually both reflect on the past, but also think about how is this relevant to our democracy as we move to the future? And I think that maybe that, this is just some slides just explaining what's there now and how the project has evolved.
Can I interject some points? A very relevant point here is that the plan that you see, there are two projects that are going to be happening simultaneously. The town, as I'm sure you well know, has had a landscape renovation refresh, and most importantly, accessibility project for a long time. And we, you know, and we are now going, we have been for some time now. Miriam has been working with the landscape designer to come up with a coordinated design, and now we're heading into a coordinated construction project. The plan you see in the lower left is where the town was in terms of its concept for the landscape plan. You see that there's a, you know, a winding path. There are a couple of plazas with benches, and then the main path that gets you to the upper Belfry Hill. And you see to the lower right where we have arrived, where there still is those elements, and most importantly, full accessibility all the way to the back of the plaza, which was always the intention, with the addition of the monument. So the monument in the end really is just the ceremonial rods. There was a plaza before. There's a different kind of plaza now. And now we are introducing these ceremonial rods. The rest of it is a landscape project under the purview of the DPW. Fully coordinated, though, you know, in terms of design. Okay.
No, that's, thanks. This is just some slides just to show you, you know, we had a conceptual design, and it's sort of to show how we evolved by collaborating with the landscape architect. We got the next slide. We can have the next slide, and I think that's, oh, yes, and then this is going to be a plaque that has the, is basically like the book, it's like an honorary book. And it basically tells the, you know, has some statement about what this is about, and then it also will have the names of the 81 the, the militiamen that were in here and some acknowledgements. I'll have the next slide. I think that's.
Yeah. So now we're really going to fly. This was, just to give you an idea of what this landscape project was about, because they are so integrated. This is the firm that's doing it, a terrific firm called Groundoo. Next slide. Here you see their actual construction document, the same plan that you had seen before, and I think you now understand that with the exception of the rods, it really is their project. Including that they have actually, quite reasonably, for the sequence of events, have agreed they're going to build the plaza. We are actually going to have a separate contract, build the foundation and install the rods. Next slide. This is actually no longer particularly relevant, so other than to say that the materials, when it comes to the paving and the benches, is going to be in line with what is being used throughout the Battle Green and the Main Street area. There aren't going to be these kind of flowers. There's really, the intention is, more than the intention, we are going to preserve pretty much everything in terms of the plantings that are there. Again, I'm, I'm really speaking for the landscape project, but we're on the same page. The rods will actually be, at this point, may change again, in Vinka Minor, which you see in the lower left, that already exists on that site down near Clark Ave. It, you know, we've talked about grass, but the DPW was concerned about maintenance, having to cut the grass. This doesn't have to be cut. It's a little bit offset in terms of wanting to have people be able to walk through, so it'd be one or the other. Next slide. And we're really going to fly through this. This was administratively and contractually where we were, you know, in terms of the process that we were going through. I know you, this is the preliminary budget. I mean, the donation was $250,000. The allocation here is 170 for the construction of the, again, really pretty much the rods and the foundation and some portion, you know, of the plaza design and consultant fees. We, we have a team together, including structural engineers and geotechnical engineers and visualizers and so on. So there's a lot of people who are on board and working, and then money for maintenance. Next slide, and you can really move on. This was really, if, if you have time and you want to read through it, it's a description of how the two projects are coordinated, you know, what, what the scope of work is for the landscape project, what the scope of work is for the monument project, and how the construction schedules need to be coordinated in order for all of this to happen and the cost allocation. And the last, which is an important one, given the timeframes when, you know, when a decision was finally made and where we are, this is an incredibly compressed schedule to try to get this done by April 19, 2025, but we're determined to do it if we get, you know, if we get approvals and can get moving. Again, you've heard that we have a construction team on board already, and they're fully engaged, looking at this and coming up with the final details and pricing. And I think that's it.
Thank you. And before we take questions from the board, if you could just talk about the timeline of, I know you've had other meetings, maybe you could just reference the other meetings. What, you know, what came out that the board might need to or want to know so that we're all prepared to ask their questions?
We met with, we've actually met with both monuments, memorials, tourism, and HDC, and this morning we had a site visit with HDC. So they, we actually staked out the location, so they give them a much better idea of exactly where everything is. I think that meeting, great, to be honest with you. We have another meeting with them. I'm sure when. There's a special meeting on the, the 26th of September. We thought we were on that, but now we're unsure. I've actually got a memo into seeking to find out whether we're on that one or whether the final meeting be October 2nd, October 3rd, I'm sorry, which is their normal meeting. That's when we'll be finally found out. I have a follow-up meeting with my monuments and memorials next week. And I think, other than the, 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 this next Select Board meeting, which I think we're on also, this was just the presentation portion. I think that gives you the timeline of everything, so that if everything falls into place, the latest, hopefully, we'll have all our answers is October 3. Right, okay. And we talked with, we did have good conversation with Dave, and he was, he assured us, we've talked a couple of times, that he will be able to get the landscaping project done in this, with this amount of time. He says, hopefully, we have, especially if we have the winters we've been having lately, they worked well into the winter time before, so.
All right, thank you. I'm going to now open it up to the board for any questions, comments, concerns that they want to share, so. Who's like, Joe, yours? Here's Ms. Barry. If you don't mind shutting off your mics, so we don't get the, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for coming in tonight. This is helpful. So I just want to kind of start from the beginning of, you breeze through your slides, which I do appreciate, but can you kind of highlight at a super high level, what is different from this design from the previous design? Because at a very, very high-level glance at this, and I'm looking back at some documents we saw in May, this looks similar, and I'm asking for the board and for people in the community.
Yes, I, I can answer. So the original, so the concept is the same. The difference is now the, the actual symbolic part of the memorial has been moved further back. And it actually marks the threshold between the front and the back of the site. The, also in terms of the landscape, the, the front yard, if you will, of the site has been, been made a lot more open and more inviting, and so that, you know, that gets sort of integrated. And so that's part of the integration of the landscape, the original intentions that David had sought and what I had proposed, you know, when I was just proposing it. And so, so that's, that's really part of the major change. The other thing is that the rods are shorter. They were originally eight feet, but now they are six. And I think that that's. And the footprint has gotten to be a lot smaller, and we're still kind of working at consolidating the, so to minimize the impact that it would have on the park.
But can I actually, I'm sort of asking a question, Barry. There's a button, we've had many changes here, and I, I'm, I think you may be asking, you're saying you saw a presentation in May, and how that, what you saw in May versus what you're seeing here?
Yes, so the board talked about the cement.
And what they saw in May was the competition?
Was the, yeah, the competition.
Then Miriam answered exactly right, because there's been now actually a bit of adjustment even since this, which you've heard about.
So my, my recollection, again, for full transparency, I'm also chair of the Lex 250 Committee. And I, so my recollection at that time is this board reiterated our preference that ammonia be either completely on the left side of this path or the right side of this path.
Right, and so one of the things, if you look at the, what was originally proposed is that the site, the path basically divided, was a, was a divider in the, in the original design that was proposed. And the, what this does is that the path is a uniter. You know, we're actually uniting the two sides so that it becomes part of the message, is that it's a, it's a sequence. But I think that it would be useful to see what, the slide that compares, like all the plans, because, which is not this one, it's like maybe two further up. This one. So you see, like, if you look at that, that path in the lower, maybe Larry, you can.
The lower left, you're saying?
Yeah, the lower left, you can see that it has this very winding ramp that ran across, and the path, the diagonal, basically divided, broke the side into two sections. And what this part, this project, this version does is that it incorporates some of the, the same handicap features and so on, but it actually sort of makes the site be unified. I will also add that we actually did some calculations, and in fact, we have like a lot less paving with this new design than that version. It's actually like almost 500 square feet less of paving.
And then the other question I wanted to ask, excuse me, because I recall this came up in May at this board, because we had received, can you turn off your mic? We're getting feedback. Some public, some feedback from the community on it. If you want to go to a different slide, Kim. Thank you, Mark, was the, the colors of the rods. And we've received a lot of feedback from the community over the colors of them being red and blue. And I don't know if you want to speak to that right now in terms of why they're red and blue and what that means as the artist versus how some people in the community and the greater public might be taking the red versus blue?
Yes, so, so clearly, they, there's, there's two aspects of the colors. One is, of course, that the red coats were, were red. And so, and the, and that the Continental Army under George Washington adopted blue for the uniforms. So even though at the time of the battle, people didn't have the blue uniform, it was meant to be representative of the Continental Army. The, and, and, and this is like, you know, all representations pretty much represent blue as being the colors of the Continental Army. The, the other thing is that it's very important that the, the monument doesn't disappear into the landscape, right? Like if it was a, you know, a more subdued color, it would become more like camouflage. And then it becomes like camouflage, A, is more like a World War I sort of experience of the military, which is not what was experienced in the 18th century. The 18th century had very, they loved bright colors. If you go to the website for Mount Vernon. The website for, um, Mount Vernon that has been restored. You would be surprised at how bright the colors were. And that what we experience is very much the faded version over time. You know, it's kind of like when people see like Greek monuments and they think that it's, they were white, but in fact they were like very much brightly colored. And so, um, so it's actually consistent. In, it, it, to be bright. And, and, and that it also would like stand out in the landscape and as, as a contemporary. Presentation as well. And, uh, one of the things that we were asked to do is to address both the past, so it is sort of. Consistent with an eighteenth century attitude, but it's also that it's, it's meant to be. Sort of like, like, you know, it's sort of like the, like the play Hamilton. Where it's both about the past, but it also sort of engages a new. Uh, a new generation. And, and I think it's sort of meant in that spirit. Obviously it's not the same, but it's like meant in that, in that spirit.
And then my final question, based on what we're seeing tonight is, you said originally these poles were eight feet tall and now you're proposing sixty. The top of the pole, is that flat, rounded, pointed?
They're basically just capped.
Round, flat.
So, yeah, so.
Cause I still struggle with the fact that I know you kind of want this to be interactive. I'm just not sure how interactive we want this to be with a certain demographic, age. Group in this town. And I really don't want this to become like a TikTok video, people trying to. God knows what with those poles, walk on them, lay on them, play with them, something like that. No, seriously, that is a concern for the town.
Well, one of the things, one of the things that has changed, if you notice, is that it's now not on grass, but on Vinka. And it's both for the maintenance, but also there is actually a great change so that it wouldn't be that easy for people to like walk. Around them. You still have the experience of being in the middle. You know, the, the sort of in the middle of the two armies, but like the idea of actually like. Uh, meandering through them is something that has also been sort of. Not included in this latest version.
Okay, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Mr. Pato, did you have a hand?
I do, I, I do. Uh, so, uh, first, before making any comments, I want to thank you for the work you've done. Um, I think this is a very creative and interesting design. And that you've been willing to, to engage with it. Uh, but before I come. To, to you, I want to go to Mr. Malloy. The landscaping plan that is here, this, that proceeds no matter what we do, right?
That's correct, and it should proceed this fall.
Okay, thank you. So, so Ms. Barry raised some of the questions that, uh, came up at our May sixth meeting, but not all of them. I'm gonna visit a few of them. And one was essentially community outreach, because one of the things we observed in May sixth was. That this was not universally celebrated as a design. And that there was a lot of feedback from the community that was negative. Uh, and while art should challenge. We are the custodians of the Battle Green. And have to look forward to. How, whatever we allow to happen here is going to be received by the community today and for generations to come. So in your redesign work. How much community outreach have you done?
I, I, Barry, I think you should.
Yes, yeah.
In terms of world, in terms of townwide, I would say none. Um, but I have reached out to. A lot of other influential people in town, um, and for, for their, for their feedback, but no. Um, but I, I do want to address the, um, the, the, the public comments, because I looked at all those public comments. And there was, they were widespread. There was, you're right, there was some negative comments, but there was negative comments about all the, all the designs. And you've got to remember, um, you know, when Captain Parker statue first went up, there was a big to do about that too, that that was too contemporary. Vietnam Memorial, which is the most watched, looked at memorial now in Washington DC was really lambasted when it first went in. So I, I think you're right. I think we have to look the long term on this project. And. Even though I appreciate the comments of those people, this is a work of art, people are gonna look at it differently, people are gonna have their different opinions about it. I think though, in terms of the test of time, this has much more of a, of a, of a. Potential to really reach that, that goal of, of surviving the test of time. In its simplicity itself, because it is simply a simpler design. Um, if you had a, uh, we don't need another statue in town. We have plenty of standalone statues. This is something unique. It, it, it bridges the, the green to the, to the Belfry better than anything. And for the people who can't go to the reenactment on April nineteenth every year, this is their. Chance to witness that and to really feel the, with that, with that supposed to be like, so. Um, even though I, I appreciate those opinions. Um, like any art project, there are people that probably hate the Mona Lisa. Um, I do think that this project is a perfect example of something that will stand the test of time. So I appreciate that response, um, but I'll note that we just inaugurated a new monument across the street. And that did engage the public. Quite extensively, and it came with a large. Community that supported and advocated for it forward. I just don't see that reception for any of the, of the proposals, but not for this one. So I'm concerned. Uh, I'm, I'm also concerned about. The discussion of the colors. What, what we observed was, um, comments coming from the community concerned about. The current day's political stat, uh, sit. Station. Um, and not wanting to play into that. And I recognize that this is going to be long-term, et cetera, but I do look at and say. The battle on April nineteenth was not between two standing armies. Right? The Continental Army was formed on June fourteenth. Well after the, um, uh, uh, this particular battle, and this particular battle was of a militia. Uh, Lexington's militia, which were farmers. And it, they were wearing their own clothing. It was a variety of colors. Creating this impression that this first encounter. Was one between two standing armies, I think, is a mis- disservice to the history. Um, so I'm, I'm really concerned about this being how we re, uh. Reflect on the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. I am still concerned about the safety issues that Ms. Barry alluded to. Um, with regard to even though it's not grass. I don't really see this as deterring the interested, uh, members of our community. And. I'm also concerned about the discussion we had on May sixth, which was when we put out this RFP, we said. Either on one side or the other side, not both. Yeah, I, I, I will, I will address that. Um, that was one reason why we actually moved everything further back. Neither of those sites are involved now. We moved it further back away from the street, first of all, so it would not be as, as in your face. And it actually even works better because it's a pathway directly, uh. Down from the, uh, from, from the Belfry. The two sites in front, we felt was too close to the, for any monument, too close to Mass Ave. And we actually physically saw the site. Uh, they were real close to, to Mass Avenue. And we felt that that was not appropriate. Um, being so close to the Captain Parker statue, you wanted to have some sort of distance between the Battle Green and the actual monument itself. So that's how we addressed that.
I just, I just also wanted to, um. To clarify that the way that initial design was done by the landscape architect. The assumption was that there would be objects. That in other words, the, the monument would be an object. And if you look at the other proposals, they are objects. And one of the constraints that we also had was that. It would not be very tall, because we didn't want to compete either with the Belfry or with the monument, uh, monument. And so one of the intentions of this approach. Is to actually make it more of a. Is abstract, but also experiential. The, we were given as a charge, a number of goals. And that's what we tried to, to, to address, you know, what were the goals? And, and also, um. We were also given that it was not meant to be, uh, representational. That was one of the, uh, sort of ground, ground rules for all the artists. And so. And in terms of the process, I mean, we had. You know, we had three weeks to come up with a design, a presentation and everything. And I, I think that, you know, of course we would be, uh, happy to talk to whoever we need. And outreach, uh, but we do have a time constraint. And so, and so that's, that's kind of the, you know. The. The challenge here, I guess the challenge.
I think I'll pass per now. Mr. Cindy?
Thank you, um, and I appreciate, I, I can tell the, uh, the energy that's gone into this and the, the thought. But I would have to reiterate what Mr. Pato and Ms. Barry said, that. Um, at least for me, my understanding was that the select board was approving. A monument that would be placed on one side of the path or the other side of the path, not both sides of the path. And so the concerns that we raised in May was that we wanted to see. Only proposals that would be on one side of the path versus the other side of the path. So that's, that's for me is, is an important thing that. Doesn't seem to have changed. The other thing that hasn't changed, we haven't, nobody else has mentioned yet, was at the last select board meeting, we discussed maintenance issues. And one of the concerns I have. Is when you have closely spaced rods. I don't know if any of you have trouble, uh, getting leaves out of your bushes, um. But I, I can imagine very quickly that trash and leaves could get stuck between there and we would have an ongoing sort of maintenance. Sort of nightmare to have it look good, because you would be finding leaves and trash and. Plastic bags and whatever stuck in there. And so, uh, we had heard that that could be a problem for, uh, town staff as well. Um, the other thing that I'm a little bit concerned about is we said we wanted it to take up less space. It sounds like you've taken up a little bit less space by compacting things. Uh, but now we have these poles in the middle of the path and I get concerned about these additional poles from an accessibility and a safety. Concern. And I would agree from the safety perspective that Ms. Barry is bringing up and Ms., Mr. Pato. Says much more artfully than I could, um, about the concerns that I, I think there's certain demographic that. Could be injured on this or do, attempt to do things that we might not want them to have happen. Um, I also am in this red versus, I get stuck on the red versus blue thing we see every day on TV, red versus blue. And I, I, I feel like rather than being inclusive, this might actually be divisive for many visitors. Bringing the eye to colors that represent today's sort of opposing political parties. And so that, to me, the use of these colors, as Mr. Pato pointed out, it's, the blue is not, we didn't have an army at the time. So the, the two colors would seem confusing at best to me. And finally, I think if I understand correctly, the steel poles would represent only men. And as Mr. Pato was just saying, we've just been through a whole monument process where we're trying to recognize the contribution of everyone in town, not just men. And so I think from an include, if we're trying to be inclusive, we should be recognizing the valuable contributions of everyone. So I hear the, the artists saying. There's a deadline, there's very little time. Um, we have to do this now kind of thing. And I think we shouldn't rush this, right? We should be doing something that will look good fifty years from now and, and will have the entire backing of the community. So, uh, that would be my impression. If we're want something that's engaging, interactive, inspirational, inclusive and timeless, it's not something that you can rush to get that done. So I would, I would hesitate to sort of push hard. To have something that doesn't have the entire community behind it at this point. And so, um. Yes, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, but that's, that's, that, that's what I was trying to get across in May as well.
Ms. Hayes?
So I share some of the thoughts of my colleagues, but I, I have to say, I actually. I, well, first of all, I have moved about a hundred and eighty degrees on this project over the course of its evolution. Um, and I actually think that this is very welcoming and engaging at the, at the place it is. And if you really look at where the map shows how it has moved both back and frankly. Down, if you're from the way this site orientation map shows, it really is more on. A side and I, I. I recognize the, the issue that I. Adopted, uh, somewhat strongly in May, along with everybody else, that. It, it was more an, an issue of equity that we had told everybody and everyone else had designed for the one side. And that was really the issue, I think, that we had. So while I think that, you know, I'm, I'm. I'm moving on from that, I guess, whether I should be or not, um, I, I understand the reservation. And. I hadn't thought about Mr. Pato's point, um, relative to. The fact that we were not the Continental Army, um, but yet I think that the symbolism works. Uh, we were the smaller band, it is associated with that color. And I think you get the very strong image of a small group. Of whatever color, standing against another much larger group. Um, so I, I, I think that's not. That's not stuck for, I, I'm not stuck on that, on that piece of it. Um, I, I actually. I think I, I have to say I like the way it looks right now. I think it would be actually a very interesting addition to the landscape. I think that, well, one question I have for the artist and then a couple of questions I have for my colleagues, but one is, I think in the original. Version, you had names of the various, um, individuals etched on the poles. Is that still in this as well? No. So you have, the book is your sole source of information and.
Yes.
Interpretation?
Yes, and there would be a QR code so that people could get additional information. You know, cause there's just so much you can put on a, on a plaque.
Okay, thank you. And, and I do love this, by the way. This was a, like, hey, I love the way this is done. Um, but so Ms. Barry, has the two fiftieth commission discussed this in its newest iteration?
Yeah, no. Um, and the other thing I will say is, excuse me, there have been some conversations over time with Mr. Malloy, myself, Mr. Lucente and the donor. Um, about the fact that, well, it would be nice to have a monument unveiled on April nineteenth, twenty twenty five. If that wasn't possible and the donor was amenable to it, we could unveil. You know, whatever is going to be built, we could do a groundbreaking, we could do something. So we've gone through multiple iterations of what is possible. This is the most recent one where they're trying to hit the April nineteenth, twenty twenty five date.
Thank you. Um, so. I guess my feeling is that, um, while I, I do like where the project is. Um, I respect the, um. The concerns about. Having this be representative of the community and supported by the community. Um, and the, um, evoking of the. Townwide support and participation in the women's monument, uh, is an important. Corollary. Um, so I am. Hearing it sounds like hesitation from my colleagues. Um, and I think if that is where you are, I will respect that as well.
So I, I first want to thank you for the work and the, and the collaboration. Mr. Pato said it very well. It's hard. To design something unique and different and provocative. to design something unique and different and provocative that, you know, that gets widespread uh, community support and engagement. However, um, I think this is strangely growing on me. I I, you know, I first saw the design, I didn't, it was sort of like jarring. And I thought, wow, this is, but the more I've looked at it and the more I've reflected on it, it's it's now more interesting than it was. And I had the similar issue with the Lexi here monument, to be quite honest with everyone. I was very taken back by, you know, and I think we would all agree, it looks nice. It it's um, it fits in or starting to fit in more every day. I've asked some people younger than me, what do they think of this? And I've gotten lots of positive feedback from people that, you know, think, oh, this is very cool. It's a, you know, it's sort of a unique way to look at the war um, and bring a different age group interested in, you know, because frankly, if you go to the battle green and you look around, there's really nothing to look at, although we have these lovely signs that we put up, which came out really nice. And it does tell a good story. But for younger people, this sort of is an impressionable um, piece of work for people to look at, you know, very young ages to say, oh, I remember the the red and the blue and the primary colors stand out. Uh, so there's some, there's a lot of positives, I think, out of this. Some of my concerns, however, I will echo. The the color. I I don't mind the red, right? I think the red is representative. It it almost feels like the blue is so, they're very organized and it it almost misrepresents, I believe, I believe Mr. Pato says it's true. Almost misrepresents the organization that they had. So I think what makes our our battleground so remarkable is that we weren't, I'm not burying no offense, no offense to the Minuteman, but it wasn't as organized as the other group. And this looks like we were equally organized, we just had less people than they did. And that wasn't really the story, right? The story is the farmers and the the people that came out of their homes to help fight for a cause they believed in. And I wish, you know, and again, I don't, I'm not the artist, but I wish the story could be told somehow with the colors and that that side. Um, my other concerns have to do with view from the statue. I don't really have a good sense of if I'm standing at the statue, what am I seeing? And these are gonna look like little spots of color. Are these gonna be, you know, in your face? Um, wow, what's that bright thing over there? Because it is very, this feels from the imagery very close to the statue.
It's like it's pulled, it's way, it's it's pushed as far back as we can, given the topography.
Yeah.
Because it has to be, it has to be handicapped accessible. And so it's as far back as we can and still make it um, with the correct grade to be handicapped accessible. And because of the grade on the site, uh, we cannot push it any farther. But from from the side, you would be able to look at the monument, but not the other way around. From, in other words, you would really have to be right in front of it to be actually to see to see what's going on.
So I I think what's different here, or it was very different, and there's pluses and minuses to it, is Belfry Park has been, it's sort of like a hidden gem. Like, if you know it's there and you go take your lunch breaks there, it's lovely, right? It's very private. Getting rid of all the sort of bushes and greenery sort of brings and welcomes people into the space, which is nice. It just makes it less private and more visible to the statue. And, you know, I'm looking at it from this angle, it does feel like it it feels very connected to it, but I I think that's one thing I'd just like to understand if I'm standing in front of the statue and looking that way. What does it look like on that angle?
We can, we can test that because we have a 3D model. So we can actually test what it is. I will say that there will be some additional plantings right on that edge.
Okay.
Just into the house.
That dyes into the house.
And that was also missing from this, which we were promised at the last round that there would be more screening for the
Yeah, so so in the actual landscape plan, that's in fact included.
Okay.
It's just that, you know, when we were doing the renderings.
Okay.
Uh, we missed it. Uh, but that's definitely something that we would be um, adding as well because there has been some confusion about that. It is, it is basically open forward, but it is sort of framed on both sides. And so, and so.
That the, so to reiterate or to sort of emphasize that the both the landscape, you know, project and our project intend to maintain pretty much everything in terms of planting that's there. This is happening entirely in the grass between all, you know, the this, what what is now between the grass and open area in Clark Street and what is now between this and the house. But there isn't, some material will be added between this and the house.
My my last concern I'll put out there is the ribbon cutting slash timeline slash construction completion. I've never known a construction project or any project in Lexington to be quick. And all you need to do is look at any public building that we built and, you know, it's always in years, not, no offense, Mike, sorry. It's always in years, not in weeks or months. And, you know, we're looking at a tight timeline and we haven't broke ground. We haven't uncovered any other issues. I I think our expectation level needs to shift a little. Even a simple sign, a countdown calendar, right? That took four months to actually, like, right up to the minute, just get that little thing, you know, launched. And I'm just worried, we're talking about five months for a very intricate design project. And I and our GPW and our deep Department of Public Facilities is phenomenal. But we're all human and I would hate, what I would hate to see is a half finished project on April 19th. Uh, I think that would be a disservice to the project and a disservice to all the millions of people coming here. So that would be my only other thing is us readjusting what our expectation is. And maybe it's a wonderful July 4th. You know, kickoff or something more realistic. But I, in summary, the design is is growing on me. That's where I'm at right now. So I know your next step is to go back. You have more meetings with HDC and more meetings of monuments and memorials and and come back. And I will take public comment for, I'm gonna ask, yes, Ms. Berry?
Are you scheduled to go to Commission on Disability?
That's real interesting. Uh, where is she? Um, oh, sorry. I have requested that three different times for the um, Victoria Buckley, I believe she is, is, and have not heard from her. Um, so I just heard from um, Linda Dixon the other day. She's given me the name of somebody else in the Disabilities Commission to um, to talk to. But yes, that was planning to speak to her and this has been going on for three weeks and I just never got my email answered. Uh, Linda also reached out to her, uh, never got an answer also. So we have another name and now we'll pursue that.
Hey, you know, we'll take public comment and um, if you can either raise your hand online or come up to the microphone. Christina Burwell online has had her hand up for about a half hour. So I'm gonna call on Christina Burwell first, if you could state your name, address and how you would like to be addressed by the board.
Christina Burwell, 6 Albemarle Avenue, she, her. Um, it's easy to have your hand raised when it's online for a half an hour, so no worries. Um, I'm I'm sorry I'm a little late to the party, but I did want to weigh in. I come at my perspective from a career in art and design as well as human factors engineering. And so with that perspective, I just wanted to say that when I look at this with fresh eyes, it definitely reads as Republican and Democrat. And knowing the great national tension we have right now, I don't think that's a good thing. Um, likewise, I think the path going between the two does read as divisive. So that's just my take on what I'm seeing tonight and I I just wanted to share that.
Thank you very much for your comments. Uh, any further comments? Please raise a hand online or at the microphone if you can identify by name, address and how you would like the board to address you.
Dawn McKenna, 9 Hancock Street. Dawn or Mrs. McKenna is fine. Um, as we've talked about, there's two different components to this project. And I was on the original um, visioning portion of the committee. Um, and I did go to the site visit today, so I've been following this and and bet on various meetings. Um, I want to start by talking about the landscaping piece. Um, when I was on the Monuments and Memorials Committee meeting, I expressed some concerns and um, Dave Pinsono reached out to me and he and I met on site um, to talk about different things. And and one of the things that I have been thinking in the past few days about this is calling it a park is very confusing. This is not a park. We specifically put the sign that said the Belfry because that's what it is. And the vision of that area was to in fact, open it up and make it visible from the connecting sites as you've seen in various iterations of being able to stand at the visitor center, stand at the Minuteman statue and look. Um, but some of the plans, and I know it's been modified, so I want to just say that to some extent. But I I guess I would really say we need Mr. Pinsono here to be able to um, go go through all this and make sure we're all on the same page as to what's actually going to happen versus what's been put on paper at the moment. Um, so I expressed my concerns to him. One of my concerns is you're seeing six foot paths in these designs. Um, the path that goes around the perimeter of the battle green is four feet. And when I spoke with Mr. Pinsono, he thought that that was doable. I'm also very concerned about the material of that path because what they used on the battle green was stone dust, which is specifically what we tried to eliminate and use stabilized aggregate. And I can explain the difference between that later. Um, and, you know, the idea for that was to have it open up for picnicking and have all the grass there. And this proposal is very heavy centered on eliminating most of the grass between the monument and the landscaping. So I I guess I'll leave the board with a question that doesn't have to be answered tonight. But what is the process for making sure that the landscaping part of it is correct? Then I just, I need to talk about the monument quickly, if I may.
Is it less than 10 seconds?
There's not less than 10 seconds, but it's important. So I'm happy to wait if there's anybody else who wants to talk first.
Let's just see if there's any other people in the room. Is anyone else interested in making a comment on this item? Okay, Ms. McKenna, 30 more seconds, please.
Thanks, it won't take that long because you all have said a lot of the comments. But um, one of the things that I'm concerned about is the introduction of the plaza. Because the plaza not only connects the two sides, but it also introduces brick into the site, which is another material. Um, the other thing that hasn't been mentioned is that the securing of the poles is planned to be done. And I did talk today about whether there's anything they could do about this by digging pretty deep down into the hill to to secure them. And I forget how many feet, but it was a number of feet. And then putting something to secure them underneath that. And I know they're rethinking that, but that's really important. Um, the other thing is I would urge you all to go and look at the stakes that are out there because it's very close to Clark Street. And the, we shouldn't have it quite so close. And they did say that could be changed. Um, and just my last comment is just to um, answer your question, Mr. Lucente, about the visibility. I went and stood at the minute, at the Minuteman statue. I went and stood at the visitor center and I looked at it. And the way they're planning on opening it up, which I agree with in the front, not on the sides, the sides need to be, you know, much more um, secured, but it is quite visible even as far back of it. So go take a look at the stakes. Thank you.
My colleagues, is there any further questions or comments anyone would like to make at this point, Mr. Sandy?
Since the landscaping was brought up, I just wanted to say, looking at the site plan proposed by the town in the lower left, I really like that.
The lower left of what's showing on this?
Over this slide that has the existing, of the slide that has existing conditions, site plan proposed by the town, so I put, I can't remember what slide you are on, guys.
14.
Right. I just, since we're talking about landscaping, you're looking for feedback. I just wanted to say I was very appreciative of the site plan designed by the town.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sandy. So I'm hearing from my board some mixed feedback and I I just want to acknowledge that we're not all on the same page. I think there's some level of likes and there's some level of dislikes um, and at different levels for each of us. So I, you know, I know there's been a lot of work, I know there's been a lot of modifications, but um, I guess we can't guarantee a, you know, go forth and this will get approved or this, you know, or this is, you know, 100% not approved. But I I think you're continuing down the process, your meetings of monuments, memorials and and HDC. And I would, you know, we'll, we will have another discussion on this. I think if there's serious modifications to it, you know, that may delay a vote for our board as well, right? Because we we may have new questions that come up or or not. Mr. Pato, you have another comment?
So one of the things I I'm reflecting on is the, it's our district commission looking at this. And I heard from some of us fairly significant issues which might imply change, um, if there's anything to be done. And uh, I'm trying to figure out if there's some collaborative process because this doesn't feel like it's on a track for success. I'll have to say at the moment, if I had to vote today, I would say no. Right? Um, I, when we had this discussion in May, we talked about, is there a champion that can bring this forward? That can bring the community together to make something happen? Because if there isn't, this should stop. And and I don't know where we are today. I feel like we are no closer.
I will say personally, there's some concerns I had that have been addressed um, through this newer design. The height has lowered, the grass, that was one of my concerns, how do you maintain this? And I think that's been significantly altered. Still stuck on the blue color. Um, but I think there are, there has been some movement in a in a positive direction for me. And I don't, and that may not be the same for, and I'm not even actually sure if we would have voted right this minute, if it would be 2, 3, 1, 4. I I don't know where it would be. Um, but, you know, maybe to Mr. Pato's point, maybe we could um, you know, maybe include a member from the select board to liaise with the project a little closer and try to advocate for the concerns that that we've heard. And if the, you know, because you met with the HDC today, you said onsite. You know, so that that may be worth engaging with. I think to Mr. Pato's point, engaging the larger community is also a concern that he's brought up. It's hard to do that. But it it may be worth some effort to get that. And again, I will say the Lexi here monument was not a slam dunk. Everybody at the beginning said, this is wonderful. It had lots of concerns, but we had a lovely outcome, I think. And those concerns altered the project and for the better. So, you know, this may be a project that needs some slight modifications um, to make it more acceptable to the majority. And you're not going to get everybody uh, to love it, no matter what the project is. So we just need, I think that some, some members of the board are feeling a sense of, there's not enough of us well. So I I think we can talk offline more, but I think, I appreciate the the conversation amongst the board members and the candor. But I think this will help ultimately bring together the best project that we can bring. So thank you for your time and we'll see you in uh, you may not be on the 23rd, man, being on October 7th, just based on how your other meetings are going, the other groups. All right, thank you so much.
Mr. Lucente?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Walk would like to say something.
Okay, I will, uh, Mr. Walk. If you could state your name and address and then you have two minutes.
I am having trouble getting through for my video. Can anybody hear me?
We can hear you, yep.
I have one question. First of all, thank you for all engaging. I think the comments, every, it's been a long process and I know everybody's taking it seriously and I appreciate everybody's um, uh, active consideration. A lot of people worked very hard on this for quite a number of months and I want to thank them um, for their hard work. And I also appreciate all the various commissions and committees' serious And I also appreciate all the various commissions and committees' serious consideration of the various issues. I do just have one quick question, which is if, if we were to consider pushing back the deadline so that the groundbreaking ceremony was, you know, right after April 19th. I think you'd still have a question about which landscaping design to pursue. Because I, my understanding is if, if, if the monument is going to be built, there would be one landscaping design. And if the monument were not going to be pursued, it would be a second. So I don't know how that can be reconciled because it does force a decision relatively quickly around which path you're going to pursue, even if you want to kick the can down the road further and give people a chance to look at it publicly and whatever other extra comments you want to have. I do think that, and we can ask Mr. Pinsono what he's been thinking, but we'd have to probably have, we are probably coming to a fork in the road more quickly. You know, than not. So that is just a factor. I would say that we've tried to have as absolute, much positive engagement for the community as possible. We've had MAPC, we've had two committees with MAPC, we've met with several commissions. And I think everyone's tried to be very responsive. But I just wanted you to be aware of the fact that I think that you might have a fork in the, we may have a fork in the road sooner than we would like, even if you wanted to try to delay the actual groundbreaking of it. So anyway, thank you all for your consideration. Everybody has been taking it seriously and I appreciate it.
Thank you for your continued engagement in this process as well. We really appreciate it. That's a very good comment. And with Mr. Pinsono not here this evening, I think if Mr. Pinsono comes at the next meeting, we can certainly get clarification on that. Any other thoughts before we leave this item, the board members? Okay. Would anyone like to volunteer to be, help liaise on this item with the group? And I ask that because Ms. Barry and I, we're dealing with it at the 250th level at a different, you know, engagement level already. So are there any of the other three board members other than us that are interested in sort of helping liaise to, you know, advocate for what the board's been saying?
So Mr. LaCente, I think having proponents in the room tonight to hear it from us should be enough. I'm not sure. We need to add another select board member for this particular project. You know, two of us sit on the 250th commission as it is. You know, Ms. Hayes working on the Antony visit for the 250th.
And that's fair. Maybe Mr. Kuna, maybe we can talk after and if you feel like there is a need, we can revisit that. All right. All right. I'm going to move on. Thank you all again. Going to move on to our second item on the agenda. And I apologize to everyone for the delay, but I think this was an important conversation that we take the time to have today. So our second item on the agenda this evening is for the board to receive an update on the solar canopy project at the police station. We're being joined by Mike Cronin, the director of facilities, and Jeff McElravy of Tecton Architects who will make the presentation.
Good evening.
Apologies again for the lateness.
All right.
Is Jeff still on there?
Yes, I'm here.
So just a little bit of a history lesson here. So we worked with the select board and the HDC to come up with the design. Jeff graciously took on this task a couple of years ago to try to figure out this structure, what this would look like, and did a terrific job with his original design. In conversations with some of the members of Sustainable Lexington, it was thought that the structure had some opportunity for some value engineering. And so we were communicating with another steel fabricator that specializes in this type of, of a field. And trying not to use proper names here and identify folks. And they said, we have some ideas. We actually worked with them for a number of months to lighten the number of tons of steel that were part of it and to reduce the mud welding that's currently called for in the design spec, both with hopes to reduce the overall cost of the steel structure. There was also some strategy that was talked about, which would include putting this project out on the street as an RFP, where we would have the steel structure and the assembly of the racks of solar panels as one component of work. So that at the end, it wouldn't just be a steel structure up in the air, it would actually be a steel structure. The understructure of the solar panels and the panels themselves would be on top steel as one package. And then have the installation of the battery as one separate project itself. So that was great feedback for us. We kind of think that that made a whole lot of sense. We've incorporated Jeff as part of this process. And Jeff has also gone to his engineers, his structural engineers. And I'm going to turn this over to Jeff so he can talk a little bit more about what happened from his end and how things are a little bit different than they were a few months ago when the last time you saw this design, Jeff.
Yeah, so we, there we go, skip next slide there. Basically, meeting with the structural engineer, there was a few things that we really wanted to focus on. One thing was there were some welding requirements based on, on the, the way this structure was interconnected that limited the temperature range in which the structure could be erected. So I had a number of conversations along the way with the engineer about incorporating more slip joints, more opportunities for movement within the structure so that we could relieve that, that temperature constraint on the welding of the frame. And we were successfully able to do that. And in fact, as we discussed, continuing value engineering suggestions, we even found more opportunities to create that little bit of movement that took out the temperature constraint. But the big change here is really about lightening the weight of the steel. When we took a look at the, the other company's product, you know, we had used a lot of tube steel and fabricated box sections. So basically taking a I-beam and putting plates on it to create a box section. And because they hadn't done that, they were able to get a much lower weight in overall steel. So sitting down with the engineers, we identified that the, the smaller horizontal members that you see on your screen, there's some big girders going top to bottom, and then there's a whole bunch of small beams running left to right. That was our first target by, by changing those from tube sections to what we call W sections or I-beams. We were able to have a real substantial reduction in the overall tonnage of steel that we were using. It did involve changing our connections a little bit. So they were a little bit more traditional connection, but that also helped us with our, our, our temperature limitations. Then further, we looked at the, the rest of the structure that was inside. Not necessarily the perimeter of the structure that's visible on the outside. Those we retained as box beams and tubes, but the, the long girders that run top to bottom. Since we already have introduced the W sections going left to right, we felt that it was a great opportunity to go ahead and change those long beams to W sections as well. With a couple of exceptions, obviously the ones that show along, around the perimeter of the structure, but also the ones where that bump up in the middle is, we wanted to keep that nice and clean with the box beams. So altogether, we've, we've, you know, reduced a lot of tube sections and introduced a lot of W sections, which really has resulted in some substantial tonnage savings for the structure. One other thing that's still on the table that we're investigating is, you know, we had done a custom racking system that broke the, the major plane at the top of the roof into three sections. If we can work in a, well, first off, if we just change the, the shapes of some of those pieces, like again, reducing tubes and using Ts and channel sections, we can gain more savings just from that. But we could also maybe save some additional money by incorporating a more traditional racking system. So we're doing some investigation, finding out if there are manufacturers that can provide a stock racking system on top of our structure that we can work with. So all of those yellow highlighted beams are the ones that we're changing from, from tube sections or box, assembled box sections into W sections. Do we move forward? Yes. We did do a quick model of that. This is the previous view. And it's, it's a little tricky to see, but all those beams that you're seeing up there are tube sections. And you can see the smaller tubes connect to the larger rectangular tubes with a little angle plate and a top bolt that goes through. Our connection will be a little bit different with the W sections. It'll be an angle in the flange. But this is the tube section. If we go to the next slide. You get the W sections and you can see probably up on the, the ones to the right. That's where you really start to see the W profile or the I-beam profile of those, those beams. But again, the perimeter, all of the columns, the arches, all of that remains the same. It's really just changing all those box beams into, to I-beams. So if we go one more slide forward. So we did do some approximating on, based on the structural engineer's calculations. You know, so we've sort of broke down a whole series of different things, but you can see that there's a whole listing of, of tonnage that we will save by, by just changing to those W sections. There's likely also additional money that we could save because we're going to save a lot on welding. We're going to do a lot more bolted connections in there. So on this chart, you can see before we even revisit the racking system that we're saving about $313,200 just from tonnage. We also save another $124,000 if we, if we consider changing our racking system to a more conventional solution. So those are the things that we'd be looking at as we move forward with the value engineering exercise. And just a little timeline, obviously we would need to revise the structural drawings. We can probably get those revised by about the middle of October. And then put it out to bid for, from, from the middle of October until late November and get our new prices in and then begin construction in mid-December, running through mid-April. So that's our timeline. That's what, you know, the, I think the minimal potential savings that we're hoping to see. And then again, maintaining the aesthetic all around the outside of the structure.
So one. Thank you, Jeff. So one of the steps that we're planning on doing is, is having our scheduled appointment with the HDC to inform them of some of the changes that are coming. I think we're having to present that back to them to kind of show them this is what it looked like before. This is what the new look is, is it's, as you can tell, it's minor from the eyeball perspective. But from the market perspective, and the amount of time that it takes to do this assembly versus the previous version is significant. Welding is slow and it's timely and it's very important for, for temperature in this version that has been reduced significantly. So we're, we're less worried about the schedule with this version versus the previous iteration.
So this sounds very promising. Do board members have any questions or comments? I will say that this was difficult to see the difference. I think I flipped back 10 times and I still couldn't. It was like the game you played in the Highlights Magazine, what's different? Ms. Barry?
Thank you, Mr. LaCente. So, Mr. Cronin, I love your schedule here. I'd love it even better if it said you were done the end of March. Because we all know what's coming in April of 2025. And that, that area for public safety is going to need to be available in terms of, I don't know if you've had any conversations with them or if you've had any conversations with what's being planned for that area for that weekend?
We're planning to be completely out of their way, period.
Okay. So if you want to just change that 4:15 to like 3:31?
We could.
Yes, okay. We got it on tape. Thank you.
Doesn't mean we hit it, but we can change it. Mr. Sandy?
So I would echo Mr. LaCente's comments about, I looked at this for about a half an hour. And I think, is, is it one of the features that the previously proposed and the new proposed are virtually identical to anybody who is a structural engineer?
I think the borders are a little misleading, but if you look more to the right-hand side of the picture, to the furthest right-hand tube, you can actually see that, that's, that's basically a rectangle that goes from, from girder to girder. And in real life, it's going to be a W, it's going to be, it's kind of a little lip.
But, but what I'm really asking is, for anybody who isn't a structural engineer, they're never going to notice the difference between. Okay. So the, the question I have is, you mentioned the savings from, potential savings from racking. And that sounds interesting. Is that still a north-south racking or are you thinking east-west?
No, it's still the same orientation that we have it today.
So you're, are you still going to look at the east-west for some additional potential savings?
We could. I think the difference there is that that does change the profile and it does change the look to the HDC. And that might stretch out our timeline a little longer.
But could be another couple hundred thousand dollars, right?
I don't know. It's, I don't remember how much there's a cost difference yet. We haven't looked at that from a dollar standpoint, which the orientation.
All I would suggest is if there is a substantial cost savings, we should, we should at least show them that option as well.
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments? I just have one, I guess, comment, thought, you know, we, one of the reasons we put in the underground work and not the actual solar canopy was financial reasons. This is some savings. Unfortunately, it's not enough savings to bring the project in line with what the total costs are or originally were. But I know we had Mr. Malloy, we had the, we had a discussion about federal money. Do you have any update on that and whether that will maybe come or not come in? How does this saving impact that federal fund?
So the savings should not impact our funding at all. And the federal funding is in the budget. It just won't go into effect on October 1st because of the presidential election this year. And so it's in for $1,240,000. And my anticipation is that it probably will, according to Senator Markey and Senator Warren's office, it will probably be November, December, January, or things firm up on that.
Thank you for that. All right, seeing the, you know, Mr. Sandy.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Cronin for the work you put in on this, I know. To a lot of folks, Mr. Cronin looks very smooth and serene above the surface, but he's working really hard underneath the surface. So, and, and I also want to thank you for what the actual Fletcher Field looks like right now. So I think you finished that off very well. It looks great and, and ready to go for the canopy. So I'm pleased with how you've gotten to where you are right now.
It's this close, ready for irrigation and sod. So it's, it'll be a finished product before April, by a long shot.
Mr. Sandy, brought us, brought us right to our next item on the agenda. So appreciate that, Mr. Sandy. We're going to move on to our third item, which is just that topic sod and all that. So we're going to talk about considerations for future Fletcher Field use requests. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Malloy to give an update on where we stand with the farmers market and the Fletcher Field completion and all that. Mr. Malloy?
Yes, so as I explained in the board meeting packet, the DPW director and director of public facilities, Mr. Cronin, and I met with Leslie Wilcott-Henry and Linda Arno from the Lexington Farmers Market last week to talk about the restoration of Fletcher Park and the future use by the Lexington Farmers Market. We told them that we definitely wanted them there. It's the center of town. It's a great location for them. We now have lots of parking. And we, one of the things that I wanted to make clear when I spoke to her was that I was going to be giving the select board an update this evening. But what I've also talked to both Mr. Cronin and Mr. Pinsono about is the fact that, as Mr. Cronin just said, we're putting a sprinkler system in there and sod and having. And having vehicles, especially larger farm trucks, um, drive around on the park. Is going to tear all that up and probably damage the sprinkler system. And so, uh, I told her that. Um, well, a future town manager could certainly make a different determination that this town manager was making a determination that there were not going to be any vehicles. On the park. Um, and we talked about that. Um, I think I forwarded her email, um, to me after the meeting to the full board. She was adamant, but we had a very good conversation and we went out to the, um. Site and we walked around it. And I think she was surprised at how wide the concrete walkways were. And we talked about the fact that during the farmer's market, we would reserve those parking spaces so that the farmers could back up to it. And unload right there and that. You know, most of the time, last summer, not so much, but most of the time, they could be in the shade of the solar canopy. It wouldn't keep the rain off them. So last summer would have been an anomaly, but we talked about the height of the solar panels or the solar. Would be at the bottom would be about fourteen feet at, um, one point and then about. Eleven feet, I think. And they're, they're ten, ten feet tall, uh, most of them. And so, um. There, on rainy days, there would be room for them to put the tents up. They wouldn't necessarily have to do that. We talked about how. They, um, like to set up a farmer's market so that it's more of a square, not just an L shape. So we talked about reserving some of the parking along Fletcher Avenue. And where there were issues where you don't want two farms right next to each other who have bigger trucks, who have three. Farms that have larger trucks that are 24 feet long. The rest of them are smaller, will fit in the parking spaces. So we talked about bringing them around Fletcher Park and even on Tuesdays allowing one to be parked along Mass Ave, far enough away from the intersection that it wouldn't cause a problem. And most of that seemed to address most of the problems or concerns that they had. Um, there was, uh. A concern about they like to have a couple of, um, uh, vendors right in the middle. And whether or not we could let vendors with smaller vehicles drive out there. There's still full-size vehicles. So after the meeting, I, I did have a second meeting with, um, Mr. Pinsto. And I asked Dave if he has like a, a field cart, you know, that they use on other, um, parks that we have, and we do indeed. And Dave indicated that, um, he would be open to using that on Tuesday to help. Farmers that are going to be in the middle, move whatever they've got to take out of their cars and put it in the middle of the, the field. So I think we can work around all of this. The good thing is, is that 2025, we're still planning on having them at the practice fields along Worthen. Um, so. They won't be back in Fletcher Park until 2026. So any of these small details, there's a lot of time to still work that out. Um, but the, the bottom line is, and I think Mr. Cronin, and I hate to speak for Mr. Cronin or Mr. Pinsto. But I can tell you that the discussion that the three of us had, um, not one of us felt that, um, you can have. Vehicles on the park and have a nice park there. You have to have one or the other. And so, um. This town manager has made the determination that there won't be vehicles on there so that we'll have a nice park there, because I think we've made a gigantic investment there. It would be a shame to have a mud pit. So that's pretty much where we're at. And like I said, I think that, uh, we had a very productive meeting. Uh, I think all sides agreed that we've got a year to work out some of the small details. I've not, um, talked to Leslie about having the DPW use the little. Uh, carts that they have so to help them out. Um, but I think that addresses one of the last outstanding issues. There's also an issue that they have a storage. Container over there. It's a little shed where they put some of their stuff. And we would have to go through the HDC to put it somewhere over here. We had a discussion, I think all parties agreed that the best location would be somewhere between parking lot and the bike way. Maybe close to where the AT&T tower is so that it's not very, um. It's less intrusive, um, to the whole park. And so I think all of those little things can be worked out over the next year. So, um, I just wanted to give the board an update on where we were at. And, um, respond to any questions the board may have.
Colleagues, any questions, comments on this, Mr.? I would feel we're down the wrong path with this. Um, any questions or comments from members of the public? You can say your name and address and how you would like to be addressed and you have two minutes.
Don McKenna, nine Hancock Street. Um, I have to say that I. Am very disappointed to see everybody shaking their hand, heads about this. Um, as the person who advocated for that location to become the original farmer's market. The notion that we would build something and consider it okay, that you can't drive vehicles on there. Our food truck festivals, all the kind of vibrant activities that we've had there. Are basically, we're hearing that aren't going to be allowed. I'm also really disappointed to hear that you're considering saying it's okay not to bring the farmer's market back in 2025. We have a wonderful economic opportunity. To take full advantage of people who will be visiting this year. And if we wait until 2026 to bring them back, all those people that the farmer's market drives into the center. Won't be there for center businesses. They won't be there for. Getting them to understand what a vibrant community we are. So I, I know you don't have to make a full decision on this tonight, but I thought it was important that the board. Remember what the purpose of that area was. The purpose wasn't the solar. The purpose wasn't to be the police station because we all agreed that that park needed to be there. So I, I hope you'll take that into consideration and rethink it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. Hello, if you could, your name, address and how you would like to be addressed.
I'm, uh, Leslie Wilcott Henry. I live at Seventy East Street. Um, you can call me Leslie. I'm also the board president at Lexington Farmers Market. I did have with my colleague Linda Arno, really effective meeting with Jim. And Mike and Dave Pinsto and Sergeant Barry as well, talking about the use of this space. I, um, very much appreciated Jim, uh, saying that my opinions were adamant and my feelings were strong respectfully. Um, because I think, uh, I come at this and, and the other board members do as well. With decades of experience at this point, which is kind of crazy to say. We're in our 20th year. I've been doing. Farmer's market business for 19 years and many of us have been there for over 12 or 13 years. So I appreciate all the work that everybody went into figuring out whether we could or could not be in the site. I do want to second what Ms. McKenna said about. I have, uh, I'm grateful that this is viewed as a farmer's market site. But this, I have always viewed as a larger community use site. And I think the select board really needs to take that into consideration as to how this space is going to be used. It's not. It's not just for us and people who want to have a picnic. There are a lot of groups in town that could benefit. From being able to use Fletcher Park. And I think it would also benefit that greater. Idea of a gateway to Lexington. Um, it also would, um, complement and I would say soften. The, um, police station to have activity there that isn't just on Tuesday afternoons, but on. Other times as well. I think it's a great opportunity for that space to be viewed in that capacity. Um, as to us moving back to, uh, Fletcher Park. I will say that the board and me and our staff unanimously would like to stay. At Worthen Road Practice Field through 2026 for logistical reasons. When we do move back to Fletcher Park, we want that surface to be as stable as possible. And just seeing what you were saying about the solar canopy going up. It's not going to be stable if sod is just laid down and then we're there sort of at the end of May. I'm running out of time, I can tell. So, um. I, I, I welcome any questions anybody has. You can reach me via email. I appreciate the work that everybody put into this. I just wanted to. Lay all that out there. I, I, I know we've got some years to go too. So, thank you.
Right. Some time to work up the details. I appreciate the comments. I just want to add, um. You know, I think. It's, it is a difficult balance between. Having sort of a dust bowl, mud bowl and having the vibrancy and. From my other experiences, you know. That's one week and then nothing. You know, the every week is the hard part. How do you re. Rejuvenate the grassy area so it's pleasant looking. I think we would all agree it was, it's not pleasant looking. Uh, the previous Fletcher Park. So I think some compromise and, and this doesn't necessarily mean this is the last. Hurrah for us. I think we can look at other alternatives, but I think finishing the site is important too. So that we can. Use it, see how it goes. Maybe with these modifications we can make. In the future. Ms. Hay.
So to that point, um. Because I do think it's important that we keep the park looking. Attractive, um, and also being utilized by the community. Um, so I guess my question is, you raised the point about, um, modifications as we see how things go. Um, I'm wondering about the plan for the underground irrigation. And whether or not that is done in a way that. Takes into account the possibility of ever wanting or needing to move either. Vehicle or structure on and off. I mean, I know. When I laid out an irrigation system, you know, we had a lot of different thoughts, not just maximizing coverage. Um, but from what source each area got covered. So I guess I would just say I would like that. To be part of the thinking in the layout of the irrigation system. Um, that what may be additional uses of the park over time. That. You follow that?
Yeah, I actually just wanted to make one other comment that I think is important. A lot of times. The mud or the dust aren't necessarily from the trucks. Sometimes it's the humans in the foot traffic if it's very busy. And, you know, just go down to Hastings Park. You'll notice all the trucks where they parked is green and where the people walk, it's. More bad, beaten down. So it's just how. You know, how busy it is and if it's used every week. So again, good problem to have because it's a vibrancy problem. Sometimes, but, um, we do again, want to keep it look nice, looking nice.
And it took us a long time to get to a decision to put irrigation at Hastings.
Did, yes. So, uh, I think we're going to move on at this point to our fourth item on the agenda. Uh, which is for the board to review the Buza Farm Conservation Restriction. We have with us Carol Kowalski, the Assistant Town Manager for Development. She'll make the presentation. I want to thank her for her patience tonight and apologize as, as well for the tardiness.
And I want to thank her for getting up at eight AM this morning for her first meeting.
Seems like so long ago. Happy to be here. Thank you. This is, uh, the conservation restriction for Buza Farm and as the board knows. It, uh, uh, it's a requirement for any CPA funding. And this started actually before I came to work here. And I've been working on it the entire time I've worked here. So you have to be in the long game when you're in local governments. So, um, this conservation restriction hews very closely to the state model, the current state model. Uh, with the exception that, uh, you probably recall there was a, a very active, um. Debate over the use of Buza Farm and the purpose for which it was acquired. Um, so this conservation restriction reflects that in that. If it is ever, um, not used as a farm. This conservation restriction allows it to be used for active recreation, provided certain, um. Disuse has been documented and provided that the grantee. Has, agrees that the town has made every effort to look for another farm operator. Uh, I, I want to credit the citizens for Lexington Conservation. Because they're going to hold the restriction, even though it was the Massachusetts Farm Bureau Federation who was originally, um, arranged to hold the restriction. Um, over the long duration that this went through a lot of changes at the state with the state personnel. Uh, the, I'll keep it very brief. They, they decided not to and Karen Mullins, uh, fortunately suggested CLC. And, uh, Eileen Enton, the president, and Keith Omart are happy to do it. So, uh, the town will, um, contribute five thousand dollars. Uh, to help them enforce and monitor. That's very common to have some kind of. Uh, an amount that's contributed to the grantee. To make sure that they can cover the, the cost burden of enforcing this in perpetuity. So I've given, um. Kim, the instructions, they're very detailed instructions on the wet signatures and notarizing this and then getting it back to the state for the state's signatures. And I'm happy to answer questions, but I did want to just point out that the unusual thing and, um, about this is that it protects our interest in potentially. Using it for active recreation. It also protects, um, Lex Farm's interest in trying to, um, add some structures. You probably are aware they want to add some, uh, handicap restrooms and, uh, an actual administrative building at some point, not just working out of an old RV. So this reflects that and the state agreeing to that. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And I appreciate your consideration of executing on this.
Colleagues, questions or comments? This is Sandy.
I had, thank you for doing this. I had exactly the question you were just bringing up because I couldn't quite read. Into the thing that you could actually add buildings. So I, I don't know, understand where in the document it would allow Lex Farm to do that.
It's on page eight. It's item 14 of section. Three B. And it says. And it's, it's just a short paragraph. In addition to the structures described above in paragraph three B1. Allowable new structures may include any structures allowed by federal, state and local laws and regulations. And then later on, it says that, um, provided they do not exceed 1,500 square feet. And that limit on area was, um. Carefully arranged with all parties, including Lex Farm.
That was my concern because I thought the 1,500 square feet sounded small for like a 10 or. For a couple decades long restriction. So I was just wondering. Is there any flexibility there? So, I mean, I, I, I worry. That we've sort of boxed ourselves in and then we got to go to the legislature. Somebody needs 1,600 square feet instead of. 1,500 square feet for a building 10 years from now.
Is that a question? We worked it out with, with Lex Farm and it's actually a little more generous than what they thought they needed.
My personal opinion is I don't think you're going to accommodate every scenario. With a restriction that may or may not ever happen. So. I think the work and the thought has gone into it at least. So. I feel like the due diligence was there and it's. Good enough. Right. It may not be perfect, but what are, does the enemy could.
It's very helpful to understand that, uh, Lex Farm has thought that they. Will not need more than 500 square feet. So that, that's helpful, but sounds small to me.
My only question was on the. Uh, organization holding the restriction. If it doesn't exist in the future for whatever reason, what? What is it default to? Was that in the?
I didn't, um, review that part, but that is, um, in some of the boilerplate.
Okay. Are there other questions from the board?
I actually thought this was very well done and I wanted to thank you. I did notice, you know, all the, um. It, to Mr. Sandin's point, actually, I think that the, um, the clarity of intention to preserve the ability, um, to have. Structure as necessary for offices and administration is pretty clear. And I think that also would bolster. Um, to the extent that there ever was any concern about that. So I thought that the, you know, the, the great specificity about the passive rest. Uh, passive recreation, education and continuing administration. I was, um, very grateful. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. It was a great team who brought it together. We're going to say the same thing, John.
Yeah, I got here first. So I, I presume. I, I am getting old. Um, I presume the fact that the, the, um. Uh, forums say Board of Selectmen rather than Select Board is not a problem. If not, if we could have them reprinted and we will sign them again.
Thank you for pointing that out. It's in multiple places.
Yes. As you said, this is a process that's been going on for a decade or more and, uh. Uh, we changed our name along the way.
At least we didn't change our address.
Actually, this page that has a sign, I think is supposed to be signed by the Conservation Commission. Because it says, we, the undersigned Conservation Commission. Hereby certify. So I'm not sure we should sign that page.
I don't think so.
That's on the board's, um, signature.
On the page, the page, the la, the last page of the Conservation Works packet.
Okay. But that's not on the conservation restriction.
The conservation restriction is the one that says, um, Board of Selectmen.
So that certainly we have, have to change. Okay, very good. I apologize. I apologize.
Thanks. Yeah.
So we, I don't think we need to have this on another agenda, but just, you know, we'll correct the, correct the name. Script the office, the office consented or do you need wet signatures on this stuff?
It does need wet signatures and um notarized, and then it goes back to the state. It's very detailed. The instructions are very detailed and I forwarded them to Kim.
We will do our best to all get by the office and sign it. Is there a deadline that we should be targeting? Not more than 10 years?
I love it if it didn't take another 10 years. That would be great.
Kim will uh work on that. Thank you, Kim. Mr. Oh, residents that may want to ask a question or make a comment, please stand at the microphone and if you could state your name and address and how you'd like to the board to address.
Thank you. My name is Mary Rose Cozafava. I am the Board President of Lexington Community Farm. And first of all, I'm here, very curious to hear exactly what, you know, was going to be discussed today. And I can't tell you how thrilled we are to finally see some resolution coming to this very long process. I do want to thank Carol and I want to thank the citizens for Lexington Conservation. Uh, and also my executive director, panel teams for all the time and effort that has gone in from on all parties to generate a document that's a little unusual because usually uh conservation restrictions are preserving open space. And we are really trying to uh reconcile that with operating an active, an active farm. And I think this document has succeeded in doing that. I will tell you that we did get, um, we did talk very much about the square footage limitation. I would be very happy to increase that limitation if that's possible. But um, you know, we're, we, we know that that was a compromise and um, you know, we'll feel comfortable working within that. So really, this is no, just a congratulations and a thanks on the part of Lexington Community Farm.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And Ms. McKenna, if you could just state for the record your name, address, and how you'd like to be addressed.
Don McKenna, nine Hancock Street, Mrs. McKenna. Um, so for those who want to follow along and you probably don't want to hear any criticism of what's a really well-done document. And I do want to say I am completely supportive of what the community farm has done and it has evolved to. Um, I'm wearing my hat as a selectman who had to look at a lease agreement that the town had previously entered into that prevented us from doing something we wanted to do and everybody was in agreement of. So with that said, if you want to follow along with me, we're talking section eighteen on page nine of the document. It talks about the conditions under which you can use it for active outdoor recreation. And I was part of those discussions and there was a lot of controversy about that at the time. Um, but the subparagraph A says that everything is permissible only if you meet all these conditions. And I strongly believe that um a double I following such continuance abandonment or non-renewal of the lease, the grantor has made reasonable efforts as determined by the grantee to release or otherwise lease the premises for agricultural management activities and such efforts have been unsuccessful. I believe that should be eliminated and I'll tell you why. Number one, as you all probably remember, um, with the um inventory of historic houses, what reasonable efforts constituted when somebody asked for a permit to demolish their property was a moving target. It's not defined well enough. But secondly, if you get to the point that the the board, for whatever reason, the town wants to use that land and it's no longer being active as a farm, you should not handcuff yourselves against the opportunity to make that choice. So that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. Colleagues, is there a comfort level with this that um we would like to move forward with this? Are there reservations, concerns?
I was just trying to find it on what page?
It's on page nine.
Good questions. Mr. Mr. Paddell?
So in general, I I agree with Ms. Mrs. McKenna. The um, uh, but this document was a process of negotiation. Uh, what latitude we have there? Because if if there is an opportunity to preserve a little more flexibility for us, so much the better. Uh, if that opportunity doesn't truly exist, then I would rather move forward.
The state is insisting that we have um language like this. This is, this is something we worked very hard on and and it had to be modified. And uh, this is as determined by the grantee. We also want to be sure that Citizens for Lexington Conservation, that their wishes are respected and that they don't want to have to have a big job of trying to find another farm tenant. Uh, they don't think that's their responsibility, but of course, the state feels that the grantee's duty to some extent is to be sure that the town has exhausted every effort before it's um turned over to active recreation in in that instance.
Mr. Lucente, may I just point one quick things out?
I really want to finish his thought first.
Uh, you know, what I think I've heard was that this was already the subject of discussion with the state. And this language was the requirement imposed and that what we are dealing with is needing to have a reasonable grantee that will release it assuming the town has um uh taken its reasonable actions. And this will leave us in a position where if we have a grantee that does not want us to take a different activity on the site, we could be locked out, right? It could be a fallow property for an unknown period of time. But I don't know that we have the latitude to change that.
Let's see.
So Ms. Ms. Kowalski, was there discussion about just sort of putting a um shall not be unreasonably withheld type of language um as a uh um modifier on the grantee's allowance? You know, it's sort of standard legalese language, um, which doesn't quite fit because it's reasonable. But you understand where I'm going, some sort of modifier that way that says, you know, they, they get to determine it, but they can't, they can't be unreasonable either.
I can ask them.
So what I'm hearing, um, and Ms. Barry, Mr. Sandin, do you have any additional comments?
I still think 1,500 is also one of them.
So you, Ms. Kowalski, um, what I'm hearing is some questions that maybe we need a little bit more feedback on so that we're, you know, and what I don't want to do is at nine thirty, nine forty at night, after a long meeting that we're editing a document that you've worked years on, on the fly um, in an effort to, you know, just wrap it up as quickly as possible. So I think we can take into consideration some of this feedback, if you would. And you mentioned you wanted, you need to check with them, some of the groups to get some answers. How do you feel about that approach if we brought it back? And I hate to do this after you wait.
Well, I have to ask the state to make the change to um Select Board. So while I'm making that request, I can also ask them if they can add that phrase somehow in eighteen AII.
Okay. And and I think that would probably be wise for us to bring this back, just given the thing you may get a no. And the board may say, well, we're not comfortable or we are comfortable moving forward. So I I apologize for not um being able to resolve this tonight, but hopefully at the next meeting.
It's close.
Mr. Sandy was asking about space.
If we can ask the question about the square feet as well, that would be wonderful.
Do you have a figure? Because they'll ask.
Mr. Malak, can you use the microphone?
Fifteen hundred square feet is thirty by fifty building, which is somewhat larger than the um space that they're working out of now. And that's a pretty good sized office space for a nonprofit farm. Um, if you're thinking two thousand or four thousand or 10,000, Carol's right, they're going to ask how large of a building are you looking for? And so it's so that Carol doesn't have to bring this back a second time. If you have a number in your head, give it to Carol and that's what she can ask for.
I think that's very helpful, if I may, because the point of the conservation restriction is is not to protect of the ability to add structures to uh uh this property whose resource values are enumerated in in the purposes of the CR. Uh, but the very purpose of the CR is to prevent too much alteration from those purposes. So I don't, I don't think it's going to be warmly received, but if it's a small um margin, I I can try.
So help me, help me to understand.
I think Mr. Sandy is asking you a question of, can you help us understand why fifteen hundred may not be adequate?
Um, I would first want to say that that um as as Carol knows that we've been, uh, sorry. Ms. Kowalski knows we've been um talking uh at length about the addition of an an a s- an outdoor space that would allow us to run some of our programming uh away from the sun and away from the rain. And that is included in that 1,500 square foot limitation. And I don't know the number off the top of my head, but that is somewhere between 800 and 1,000 feet right there. So the additional space is really going to barely give us enough room to uh to to add the bathrooms that we would like and and maybe have a slightly smaller footprint for the, to replace the RV. So it is greatly appreciated that we, if if there would be a possibility, we had already negotiated that number upwards. But if there is any light in in being able to even to to say 2,000, I think that would be very, very helpful. Uh, even in just getting some of those basic structures that have been discussed today.
Uh, that sounds good to me. The the thing that I hadn't understood, if I'm understanding Ms. Cozafova correctly, is that the 1,500 foot is not for one building, it's for any, if even if there's multiple buildings built, they would run up against the limit of 1,500. So if you built 200 here and 300 there, that would be 500. You still have a thousand left for later. So and and I do know that they have multiple structures, not all of which are offices or or uh or 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 um store. But have other needs like maintenance and things along that lines. So I I I still think that when you're trying to manage a farm over twenty years, it's very possible to run up against a 1,500 square foot.
Ms. Paddell?
Uh, so two things. One, did I hear correctly that you've already negotiated this number up to to 1,500?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Okay, so I think it might be hard to go beyond. Uh, the second is what number do you want?
Well, I was thinking 2,000 before Ms. Cozafova said the same number. So I would, I would, to me, why don't we ask if we could do 2,000?
Is the board comfortable with that asking? Ms. Ms. Hay?
All right, I'm gonna kind of go a lawyer just for a minute. But in paragraph fourteen, it says, in addition to the structures described above, allowable new structures may include. So I could see an argument in which we're talking about 1,500 square feet in addition to what is already there. And then if subsequently you are replacing what is there, that is not part of that additional 1,500.
Yeah.
So your 1,500, when you're talking about a thousand, 800 to 1,000 square feet for your outdoor education space. I spatially challenged a little, but I can't imagine we're talking 500 to 700 square feet for bathrooms. Um, so you still have some wiggle room, even if you're expanding.
So the educational space doesn't exist yet.
Right. No, that's what I'm saying. That's the allowable new structure that can be up to 1,500 square feet, right?
At, well, I think yes. So I'm not following your question.
We we should do this offline.
This is not the, with this back and forth is not any, at this hour is not productive. And I think I would rather have an answer of what's appropriate rather than us trying to figure it out right now. So I think we're going to complete this item um right now. I think we've had enough discussion on it, knowing that we're going to have this come back. And Ms. McKenna, I'm going to ask that you, if you want to talk to Ms. Kowalski?
Well, I I just wanted to point out something, not not to make a a comment, but for her language to talk to the people.
Can talk offline about it.
Okay, I'll talk to you before you leave.
Just item out, um, just because we've, we spent more than the five minutes that was on the agenda by a lot. So thank you, Ms. Kowalski, and we'll look for this to come back to us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Um, we're going to move on to our fifth item on the agenda this evening, which is for the board to review the draft article list for the proposed 2024 Special Town Meeting. Ms. Extell, our deputy town manager, will walk us through this.
Thank you, Mr. Lucente. So there was a lot of information on the cover sheet um introducing Special Town Meeting. But for the articles themselves, um, there are seven financial articles that we're looking at bringing forth. This does not include citizen petitions because you have not even called a special town meeting yet. So we have town reports, we have appropriate for prior unpaid bills. The revolving fund article um is on there because there's um we're looking at the, there are three health funds that are being managed by the Health Department that need some cleanup and they're being managed um separately from as a, as their own separate department now. So we need to do some cleanup around those funds. The stabilization fund article, the, there's dedicating future Medicaid reimbursement. Um, and one that was dropped off, I apologize, is we're looking for a $15,000 um transfer for the ambulance replacement that was approved for FY25. And going out as is a reoccurring theme, um creating um ambulances, the cost is just escalating by leaps and bounds. They're two years out. We have a contract in hand. Um, but we um, the original appropriation was five, twenty, excuse me, was we're about $15,000 short. So that's what we're looking to to do the transfer there. Um, and then the operating budgets, um the golf equipment repairs that was discussed at a select part of meeting, um when we had to do the repairs. The public safety staffing needs assessment that we came to the board for ARBA funding, but we decided to go this way. Um, and and go for a town meeting appropriation. This will help address the staffing overtime needs that we are occurring every budget cycle for um the past couple of years. The DPW equipment for the gas replacement, which was discussed with the passage of the town meeting vote. Um, and then the last one is the RFP for our website. It just is, we just rolled it out. We we are now at our contract ending date. It's actually not October 2025, it's June of 2026. So we do have to go out again. So um with the um we had, we hired a new director of communications in that process. And that was just overlooked, that piece that we had to put that in the budget. So um, that's just some explanation on that. And then the capital improvements, the supplemental PD solar and just the description of we are going out for the federal grant. We discussed that already today. And then the last one is the Harrington Athletic Fields. And that was, that's been on the REC Committee um Capital Project. And because the central office in Harrington Project being up to FY26, the design money for that needs to be moved up as well. So that's why that's coming now versus waiting.
That all sounds reasonable. Any questions or comments for board members, Ms. Hay and then Mr. Sandin?
Um, just a sort of language one on the um, the transfer for the golf repairs. Um, it, if I recall correctly, when we discussed, it's really golf infrastructure, right? It was the pumps in the west. Something about the words golf equipment just, I think, could be taken wrong by, you know, sort of the public. I'm not sure we want to say we're, we're spending money out of reserve for golf equipment because it does sound like we're buying somebody a bag of clubs.
Yes, yeah. This was more just an internal sort of, so you had a reference because we did call it golf equipment on the presentation. So I was just trying to connect to that. But yes, we'll have the proper, proper language for that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Sandin?
So more of a question for the town manager for six and seven. I was just wondering what process you'd follow and when do you think we would know what the amounts are for six and seven?
Well, I think um on six, we would probably go forward with the amount that we currently believe we're short, which is the 1,240. And then whatever it ends up being, if we get the federal funding, then we would rescind the debt at a a future town meeting. On the Harrington. On the Harrington Athletic Fields, that's just the design funds. Do we have a seventy thousand dollars as how much? That's just design funds.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on. Thank you, Ms. Xtel, for putting this together. Appreciate it. And we're gonna move on to our last item on the agenda, which is for the board to discuss the draft to Select Board Report for FY twenty four. I will note that we are waiting two members on their drafts and three. I didn't, I was only doing a welcome message.
I thought you were doing the text to be forthcoming without under our names.
Yeah, it's just a welcome message.
Looking to make sure we're company.
I'm absolving myself this. Anyway, we are not gonna discuss this tonight because there's nothing to approve. So I will, with this, we'll come up the twenty third. So I'm gonna ask everybody who hasn't addressed their section to please. Put it in before the twenty third, even if you're not gonna be physically present at that meeting. Mr. Pato.
So since I did submit mine, there are two things I'm gonna comment on. One is the community impact section. I actually don't want to write that. I, I, I don't think we need it. And I want to be either for the board to accept that or to tell me I'm wrong and that I have to go write it. So if you haven't looked at it and thought about it, feedback would be helpful, because I am currently not planning to write.
And I also was just gonna say, Mr. Sandin, I think you wrote the part on the housing and Lex had, was approved and the governor signed it last week. I think.
It's not this.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Mr. Barry, I think that that's fair. I mean, I think given where we are, you would be making up a lot of information. And it feels, it doesn't feel comfortable. Like if I was to write that, I'd say, this feels like a homework assignment that I can't complete, so.
Which is why it wasn't there, why, because I wanted to have a discussion. And thank you for filling in the rationale as opposed to me just saying, I'm not planning to. The other thing is there was, I, I'm going to send in a one sentence correction on clarifying something that could be misread. On, on costs.
Thank you.
Do you think it's worth having the single sentence, sort of at the end that summarizes that the community impacts? You know, go beyond education or something like this, because it is what everybody recognizes and it's what we've talked a lot about at this board. So I don't know. Or would you rather just leave it off entirely?
So when I wrote about the athletic program impact, the field house and aquatic, it felt like I was already there.
Absolved. Any further questions, comments? No, okay. So this again will come back on the twenty third.
I just wanted to say, I, I, I had, I didn't know any of the information about the old rez bath house renovation. And so if folks, so this was new information for me and I'm guessing it was new information for the board about the status. So it wasn't, okay. Okay. Anyway. So just wanted to take a look at that if you're not.
Mark's good.
All right. Thanks. So again, twenty third, please be prepared, including me. Now we will move on to our adjournment. But before we adjourn, I'd like to announce that the next. Work session of the Select Board will be held Monday, September sixteenth. We will talk about the high school project. That meeting is at six thirty PM via hybrid participation. Mr. Sandin?
We're also planning, Affordable Housing Trust is planning to have a meeting in the afternoon of the sixteenth, which we're hoping would be a Select Board meeting as well. So that the Select Board members could attend.
Yes, and I believe Ms. Hay.
I actually had several conversations with Ms. Katzenbach and, and Mr. Pato, actually. And there will be information forthcoming. It will not be a joint meeting, because we will not actually be speaking at all. As Select Board members, but there will be a way for us to watch and listen. And we're working on finding that as a link, so that we will have the opportunity to hear it all in real time, but not actually be in the room with. Collectively, I suppose if one or two of us wants to go, that's fine. But it's one to four next Monday, in addition to our Monday night meeting.
Late changing change, probably starting at noon.
Okay, well then, Mr. Lucente and I will not be able to attend or listen.
But we can watch it, maybe the recording, right? I think that's, that's also an acceptable way for us to digest.
And I did talk to Ms. Tonga, she was going to request Lex Media coverage, so that it will be available.
So, so for Ms. Barry's benefit. The Affordable Housing Trust is planning to do interviews of shortlist candidates. And the reason that would start at noon instead of one is because it looks like there'll be more candidates than we thought. Four rather than three.
Okay, so we will wait for an email from Ms. Katzenbach or get a link to the video when that's done. And that will be the sixteenth meeting. It's also Mr. Malloy's last Select Board meeting hour. And. But, oh, the song that I, yeah, that's like a little post appetizer, post dessert, I guess. And then Monday, September twenty third is our next regularly, regularly scheduled meeting of the board. I'm, and Ms. Barry is out and Mr. Malloy and Ms. Xtel are also out at a conference. And Ms. Kozinoff will be in charge that evening. So I move that we adjourn. Is there a second? Move to the second. All those in favor, signify by saying hi. We are adjourned at nine fifty nine PM.